The board practices. On the second Tuesday of every month, we do a workshop. The opportunity of the workshop is for us to review the agenda for the coming voting meetings. It's also a chance for us to be more interactive with the administrative team, with staff, in terms of items that are on the agenda. It gives us an opportunity to better understand and have dialogue in regard to what aspects of the items on the agenda might be. We normally start off our meeting here with a building program report, but we have a lot of folks here today. So obviously, there's an interest in making some comments. So I'm going to move right to item three on our end, which is public comments. And by an opportunity for anyone who has any items that they'd like to present to the board, whether they're on the agenda or anything else that might be included. So I would just say, please, your comments for approximately three minutes. And particularly, we have several comments that could be helpful. Anyone who'd like to address the questions?
Oh, there it is. Ah, okay. Good evening. I'm sure most of you all know me. I'm Michelle Kluwzewicz. I'm ETA president. And on Tuesday, January 7, Eric McGinnity, Josie Whitney, Kelly Lern, and I met with Dr. Phillips, Dr. Winters, and also Christine Wieland to discuss our grievance and ask the district to follow their own policies in protecting the rights of their employees by preventing false accusations, terroristic threats against the employees. We had several cases where teachers were falsely accused, slandered, and threatened on the Internet. One as recent as yesterday at the junior high. We are here to ask the board to ensure that the district follows policies 218.2, 218.3, 248, and 348, which deal with terroristic threats and unlawful harassment. One of our teachers would like to speak with you and share his story, a story which deserves to be heard in its entirety, uninterrupted. He is here to represent the voice of our union and all here in attendance, this evening wearing blue shirts, a sign of unity and support for what he has gone through. This teacher's name is Eric McGinnity. He has taught some of our sons and daughters, mine included. He has taught one of our current board members, Mr. Arons. Where are you, Hunter? There you go. Okay. And Eric is, he has worked here 14 years as a physical education teacher at their junior high school. Eric has coached multiple sports at the junior high and high school level, including boys' basketball, boys' volleyball. He is also the longest-standing member of, who serves the A-BET Core Committee. A-BET is an anti-bullying program at the junior high school. How ironic, sorry, how ironic is it that he is actually being accused of basically letting a boy get raped in the locker room, also being slandered and also bullied on the Internet? He is, this has been a nightmare for him. The school district has not followed their own school board policies or shown support for him, and he deserves to tell his story. Eric, the floor is yours. The work, the paper that Josie Whitney is handing out right now is something that was posted about Eric on the Internet. And as you can see, it's very disturbing. And I have sent an email to some of the board members to let them know what was said.
Thank you, and good evening. On the night of May 9, 2019, I received a phone call from the Exeter Police. A detective stated he was investigating a sexual assault that occurred in the boys' locker room that morning at the junior high. The same locker room where I report for work every day had now been roped up as a potential crime scene, being searched for possible DNA evidence. The detective told me the name of the alleged victim, who in my time working at the junior high school, never stepped foot into the boys' locker room, ever. The detective was currently at the Redding Hospital with the student and mother about to have a rape kit administered. Student claimed I permitted a rape to occur during my class, under my supervision, in the boys' locker room. I was speechless and furious because I knew this to be absolutely not true. Through reviewing security camera footage behind the school near the rear entrance of the locker room, the student's accusation was quickly proven to be false. Further interrogation by the detective caused the student to tell the truth and admit I made it up. It is unacceptable for a student to make such an outrageous allegation and then not be held accountable or punished for breaking the law, wasting law enforcement's time and the valuable time of school officials, especially someone in my position where students are changing clothes and getting undressed. It is a slippery slope to be on, at any point in time being one accusation away from being labeled a pervert. Both teachers and administrators need protective policy written to support all employees against false allegations made by students. This year, on November 4, I was made aware of an online post mentioning my name to a website called Channel45news.com. This is a website where anyone can post a story and have it appear to look like legitimate news at first glance. The title read, "Eric McGinnity Facing Jail Time After Entering the Girls' Locker Room." I believe you have this story printed in front of you. The story depicts me being shot with a gun by a male student in the girls' locker room. I immediately reported this to my two principals, who contacted the IT department and appropriately communicated up the chain of command. It was determined that four students viewed the website on their Chromebooks at school that day, but they were not the individuals responsible for creating the story. The next day, a colleague alerted me to a second malicious story that was posted. This headline read, "Eric McGinnity Shot and Killed." This story depicted me raping a male student in the boys' locker room. The student then escaped, grabbed a gun, and shot and killed me. This frightening story was posted to the Internet on November 3, 2019. I reported this second incident again to my principals on November 5. That afternoon, I took my own initiative to call the Exeter Police and file a report. Our union president was also notified, who then emailed these details to Dr. Phillips. If you are hearing these specifics for the first time, I hope you are as disgusted and appalled as I am. I am fed up with feeling like I am under attack by students. I will not sit back and watch a teenager threaten me, tarnish my name, or ruin my career. This is not why I got into teaching. I believe it's important to note, one, a threat against me was clearly made, not once but twice, both involving a gun and shooting me on school grounds. Two, these slanderous stories were at the time permanently attached to my name on a simple Google search, a disturbing form of defamation. Serious threats require immediate action and attention by school officials, yet in this situation, that was not how things were handled. Dr. Phillips finally came to speak with me at the junior high on November 20, 16 days after I first reported the threats to my principals. 16 days was too much delay to catch the culprits and conduct a prompt, proper investigation. I felt alone, left on an island, to desperately just figure things out for myself. I was consumed with fear, looking over my shoulder at work, and overwhelmed with anxiety, trying to find ways to cope with my stress. Mr. Flamm is still one of only two district administrators who treated me with decency and empathy. He would ask how I was doing on a daily basis, and I have a great deal of respect for that. So Eric, thank you. I would answer Mr. Flamm by saying, "I'm doing just fine," but really, deep inside, I had become angry, frustrated, on edge, and just physically drained. I had not slept a solid night of sleep since all this began. The stresses started to filter in my personal life at home with my wife and two small children, which I deeply regret. Some nights, I would lie awake for hours, not being able to fall back asleep, then going to work the next day on three to four hours of rest. Weeks went by without any real action or answers. Finally, the first week in December, I received a phone call and email from the Exeter Police. They were able to track down the name and contact information of the owner of the website. The detective suggested I attempt to make contact and demand removal of my name and the stories. I sent this person an email through a blog site, threatening to follow up with my lawyer if my name was not immediately removed. I checked a few days later by Googling my own name, and by some miracle, the stories had vanished. That evening, I got a text message from Joe Alcarro, Assistant Principal. His message read, "Congrats on getting that website to take down the content. I'm very happy for you." Such a simple text message, but the compassion on a human level, on a human level, is what I appreciated the most. Thank you, Joe. The removal of my name and stories right before Christmas break was quite a relief, but in my mind, no way excuses the district's poor management of the situation, nor does it ease my frustration that a guilty party was never identified or held accountable for this. The union filed the grievance on my behalf because the district violated several of its own current policies. Board Policy 218.2 and 218.3, terroristic threats, states the need for an immediate and effective response to a situation involving such a threat. Terroristic threat is defined by a threat communicated either directly or indirectly to commit any crime of violence with intent to terrorize another. Board Policy 248, unlawful harassment, the policy states the district shall maintain an educational environment in which harassment in any form is not tolerated. Policy goes on to state that complaints of harassment shall be investigated promptly. Board Policy 348, unlawful harassment, states the board strives to provide a safe, positive working climate for its administrative, professional, and support employees. At some point, I would like an answer to the following questions, which I believe you have printed in front of you. Why was this not considered to be a terroristic threat as defined in the above-mentioned board policy? Why was law enforcement not immediately notified? A police presence in my locker room the next day would have sent a clear message and ensured safety. Why was a parent link message not sent out regarding a threat made against a teacher? Do parents and the community not deserve to know that a student in my building has thoughts of shooting and killing their phys teacher? It would not just be a threat to me, but to the safety of all others in the school. Just last Wednesday, a 9-millimeter bullet fell out of a student's pocket onto the gym floor during morning student arrival. Parents and families were informed via a parent link. This should have been done in my case. Why was a threat assessment not completed on the student who was specifically named in both of the posted news stories? Too many clues and leads were not investigated thoroughly. Lastly, why did no one from this administration building have the decency to call and check with me to see how I was doing, or say, "Hey, Mr. McGinnity, we are really sorry for what you're going through. We are going to do everything in our power to support you and investigate this situation along with the police"? None of those things were done. Last week at our preliminary grievance hearing, I sat across the table from Dr. Phillips, Dr. Winters, and Mrs. Wieland, and shared much of the same information as I did this evening. When I was done speaking, three administrators just sat there. It was clear they had no intention of listening to us or working together in professional back-and-forth dialogue. Their utter silence and lack of compassion was insulting. Before we left the boardroom, Mrs. Wieland gave me a business card for the Quest Employee Assistance Program to seek professional mental help. That card sure would have been helpful two months ago. I would like to remind everyone that we are all on the same team, working to achieve the same educational goals for kids. Unfortunately, we live in a world where there have been too many violent school tragedies. We can't afford to have the mentality of, "It won't happen at Exeter. It won't happen in my district, or it won't happen to me." All teachers have been trained on the Safe-to-Say Website Portal, where staff members are encouraged to report suspicious or dangerous information. If you see something or hear something, you are to say something. That is exactly what I did, and nothing was done. Nothing was taken seriously. There was no support provided, no prompt investigation. Why? If I were in admin's shoes, I would be embarrassed and ashamed to treat one of my employees the way I have been treated. It's inexcusable, and the teachers in this room deserve some answers. I realize we cannot go back in time and get a redo to change the past events, but we can prevent something like this from happening in the future. Board members, I urge you to enforce the current board policies and consider creating new language that will protect all teachers against these types of violent threats, slanderous forms of cyber harassment, and false student allegations. Teachers deserve that kind of protection. Our name is all we have in our profession. To quote Mr. Japina, "Especially if you're in an industry where your reputation is paramount to your abilities to be good at what you do, to be respected at what you do." For 14 years as a teacher and coach in this district, I have made an effort to talk to students about showing empathy, being honest, making good decisions, and the importance of being held accountable for your actions. When I needed them the most, these core values were not upheld by central administration, and that needs to change. Thank you for your time.
I just want to say, it takes a lot of courage for Eric to come up here and tell his story the way he did. And there is a serious problem here. There's definitely a serious problem that, you know, teachers are being accused, false accusations, but there's no accountability on the student's level. And the students are empowered to do whatever they want, and you can see that in Eric's case, twice that he has gone through this. And that should not happen to anybody. I know that we are teachers, but we deserve, we deserve some protection, we deserve, we deserve to be respected. Thank you.
This was a very touching and compelling and disturbing revelation, and it's very hard for us, as a board, to listen to what you went through. As a teacher, as a human being, as a person who reacts to these hurtful information that is on the Internet, so I think everyone around this table feels your pain, certainly not empathize entirely, but appreciates the fact you came to and talked to us today, see the support you have for us, and you probably have the support from the board as well. But I would like to give the administration an opportunity to respond if you'd like. I know there are different questions that are here that I would expect the administration will honor to do, to investigate. Why this was viewed as an act? Was this viewed as a terroristic threat or not? Was this viewed as unlawful harassment or not? And were there any other considerations offered to the policy that should have applied that we didn't? So we do use a solicitor, and obviously, anything like this rises to the level of a legal review. And I'm sure the administration would use the advice or our solicitor when trying to respond to the situation. Well, I'll let the administration speak to that.
Can I just say something? I'm sorry. I'm honored to say something too, but when this was actually brought to the administration's attention, the terminology "freedom of speech" was used when we were discussing this. Harassment and slander is not freedom of speech. So I just want to make sure that the board understands that, that this was brought up by Josie Whitney and myself at a meeting, and we were told that this was freedom of speech, and it was okay to do that.
Yeah. I think, again, you know, when I look at unlawful harassment, I see the definition in our policy. I read the definition of terroristic threat, terroristic threat in our policy. I'm not going to speak, you know, with real authority. I'm not going to speak for our attorney, you know, or solicitor in terms of being able to interpret that. Regardless, it's wrong, you know, regardless of what character I have, it is wrong, and I don't know whether we would justify, you know, personnel issues. You know, that's part of the policy as well, as to what it is, and if appropriate, but not appropriate, just for. But at very least, you know, I think the intention would be to address your questions formally, to be able to get that information back to you, so you have a full understanding of why the administration is going to ask this. But again, I'm close to my comment.
Sure. Can I ask Christine Wieland to sort of put a folder together, so she can talk about all the steps that we're taking?
Okay.
Can I just say something? You know, you don't need to be an attorney or a judge to sort of figure this issue out. This is about having people's backs. You stand up for people in public, you stand up for people in private, and you stand up for people in crisis. We wouldn't be surrounded by a bunch of new shirts here this evening, which are pretty simple things, okay? So I know you're going to go through step by step, and you're going to tell me that this happened, and I'm going to hear that this happened, and in reality, this was a pretty easy issue to at least handle, how we did it, and we didn't do it. Mr. McGinnity, I apologize to you because the school board has to hold the administration accountable.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, are we ready? All right. First of all, I'd like to go through the chain of events as to how Human Resources was involved with this situation. And the first time I really heard of anything was when Michelle Kluwzewicz called me on November the 5th to make me aware of the website. And then the first thing I did was I asked her to please forward to me in a text the actual posts that were on this website, which she did. So then, you know, my first reaction, of course, I did touch base with Bob, and I went to our IT department, and I also contacted our solicitor. The IT department, basically, they could not find any proof that any postings were done here at the Exeter Township School District. So unfortunately, we couldn't hold anybody accountable here because we had no proof that anybody here did that. We don't even know if it was any of our students. We can't assume that. I also had a conversation with our solicitor, and I read the postings to our solicitor, and he basically told me that he's worked several cases like this. It was considered really a freedom of speech, and I know you guys don't want to hear that, but I'm sorry, that's the advice that I was given. And I know I did get back to Michelle the same day, and I communicated with her that I did go to IT. I also asked IT to put a firewall up to prevent this website from being accessed here at the district, which they did. So I got back to Michelle, and then I believe the next day, Josie, you sent me an email. So I responded back to Josie, basically, you know, telling her that, you know, "We're sorry, but we were advised by our solicitor that we could not really, you know, we don't have proof of anybody doing it here, we don't know who did it," and that the teacher had the right to go to law enforcement if they so choose to, which he did. And then at that point, I think it was on November, let me see, November 19, I know I was copied in an email from Eric Flamm, and then I learned that Eric had reported that to the principal. So then we had our grievance meeting, and then at that point, a lot of the stuff at the grievance meeting, I'm sorry, Eric, I was not familiar with what happened at the emergency room and all of that type of stuff. I didn't know anything about that until our grievance meeting. A lot of things came up. I was not...
What was the emergency room?
Yes. Right. That was the first that I heard of that, and then when you said about trying to get help and how you were upset, that's when I offered you the employee assistance program. But I didn't even know that you had reached out to your, you know, building principal about that. And I'm sorry, I thought you were just working with Michelle, and that's why I communicated with Michelle Kluwzewicz and Josie about the whole situation. And then I thought that that was pretty much a done deal. I didn't realize that, you know, a lot of this other stuff had taken place. And like I said, I feel very bad for Eric, and I wish there was more we could do, but unfortunately, according to our solicitor, we don't really know if it was even a student here that did it. And then I learned that the building principal and Bob, I believe then you were also in touch with the police and trying to help as much as you could. And I believe then you made me aware that you had went out and you met with Eric at the building. So all I know is, you know, I'm very sorry, and I know at the end of the website, I believe it says, "Ha ha, this is just a joke," and our solicitor basically told us that this is a freedom of speech thing, and that there was really not a whole lot we could do. And, you know, I'm very sorry. I always like to be here for everybody, and I followed, you know, the advice of really, you know, trying to respond quickly, and the advice of our solicitor. But we still don't know to this day who posted those posts on the website, and we probably never will. So all I can say is, Eric, I'm very sorry that this happened to you, and, you know, maybe we can learn lessons in the future from this, but even if this happened and more posts were made, you know, from a district standpoint, if we don't have evidence that it was done from our network, we really can't go after children. Just because their name is mentioned in the blog, you can't accuse somebody of doing something when you don't really know for sure if they did that. So I followed the advice of our solicitor, and if I let anybody down, I'm very sorry. Okay?
Thank you, Christine.
Sure.
Yeah, I would just like to say one thing in connection, which, you know, I hope there's something that we can learn from this. Obviously, this has resonated and struck a chord with all of our staff members, everybody who was there, self in Eric's place, I think, you know, as a professional, and can understand what it must feel like to kind of go through this. So I think a big and important thing for us to do, I think, as the administrative team and maybe a conjunction with the board, is to really think about helping better support an employee when something like this happens. This may happen again, and it will likely happen again. And it's disturbing and problematic, and we should be prepared to deal with it, and maybe be able to do it in a more effective way so that we have, so we can show the support that I think our staff members really expect us to show. So I'll also, I'll try to express my words of administration, not giving the responses we can do, and really understanding and extending your pain and this loss of the situation.
Can we, for any actions taken after being made and suspended by the administration? So the administration was informed of what happened in May, and nothing was...
Students disquieted.
Students disquieted. It was one of our students. I want to say thank you for coming out today and sharing. I'm sorry, I'm emotional. My son wants to be teacher, and he's here every day. That's how we have the last of the teachers coming to us. And I think one of the most important things is to let them know that they have our support as a board, and that something like this would never happen again. I know with technology, there's a lot we can't control, I get that, but as a board, we should be doing everything we can, which means we should be sitting down and looking... I know with technology, there's a lot we can't control like that, but as a board, we should be doing everything we can, which means we should be sitting down and looking at how policy is written, and seeing what we can do to make it better. Because it should never happen, it should never have been handled this time. For myself, I apologize. And I hope that Esther never comes to this again.
I'd like to thank Ann and De for their comments. I just want to let you know, though, it's the association's position that we could have found the culprit who did something like this if it was actually taken seriously, and there was more of an investigation right away on this. And there were four students at the junior high who had this website on their computers. They were not really questioned, nothing, nobody would actually have this website on the computer for just for sale. So I just want, I just want to let everybody know that there was no investigation whatsoever. Done.
Any other comments either on this topic or any other, any other additions?
I just want to say, I really think, I will challenge your solicitor in saying that this is freedom of speech. It's the same scenario that the Supreme Court has actually said that yelling "fire" in a movie theater is illegal. That is not freedom of speech. Slandering somebody, accusing them of heinous crimes is not freedom of speech. So I will challenge your solicitor on that, even though I don't have a law degree, I will challenge him.
My name is Karen Tamira, and I teach at Reifton, however my children went through Exeter. I know it was brought up when we were in conversation with some of my neighbors and things like that, that they were, they mentioned, why wasn't some sort of message sent out to the community that there were threats that a gun was going to be bring, brought to the junior high, onto the junior high property? And if it was actually written that a gun was coming to the junior high, maybe, like you said, Eric, police presence should have been, because even if, that would have taught the students a lesson that we took this seriously, and you don't make idle threats like this, that we're going to bring guns to, you know, an educational facility and shoot somebody. And I think that's another issue that had to be addressed too. So, thank you.
One thing I do want to mention, I was informed that the students, they, they were interviewed, and an investigation was done with the students involved. Is that true, Eric and Joe?
No.
Yes, there was, they were interviewed. The students were interviewed, okay? And I think the definition, I think where we're getting into questions here is, was it considered a threat? Was it considered harassment?
Why didn't you, why didn't you interview your HR? Betty Weber would have had them in her office in a New York minute. Why didn't you interview those students?
Okay, I did speak with Eric and Joe and tell me that they really...
Isn't it your job as an HR person to interview these students? Isn't it your job to get involved? That's why we have an HR person.
Okay, I did ask Joe about the investigation, and Joe said that there, nobody had any information and did not know anything. Is that correct, Joe?
But why didn't you?
Eric, is that correct what I'm saying, that these students were not providing the information to you or Joe?
My daughter's in a child...
I said, you had said that the students were interviewed and they had no knowledge or anything about, is that correct?
It's still your job. HR is supposed to do that kind of investigation. And I used to be president of the union, and I remember whenever we had any kind of issue like this, Betty Weber was on it, and she did the investigating. She may have talked to her principal, but she made sure that she got those people before her, and she did the investigating. I don't understand, and my daughter works in HR too, in New York City, and I don't understand why you weren't more involved in doing these investigations.
And all I can say is, I just wish I knew that Eric had gone, you know, to, I thought Eric was working through Michelle. I didn't really learn that Eric had, until like way after the fact. And I didn't realize that these students were viewing until after the fact. I was told that nobody here had access to that internet.
Why didn't you call Eric and check in with them?
You know, I thought Eric was working through Michelle. I didn't know that Eric had made any type of personal complaints about it, and I apologize for that.
This is public comment. Comments need to be addressed to the public, from the public to the board. This is not the place where we do ask for an answer for the administration. I know that may be upsetting to some of you, but we have to maintain a process here, and this is the board's meeting. If you have concerns, please come and address them to the board. We are not going to get into a yelling match between administrators and teachers. It's not productive. This is the role for the board to listen to your comments, and please come up to the podium if you have them.
And really, you know, I apologize to anyone if you think I left you down. I did not mean to. I was violent following the direction of our solicitor, that this was not really considered harassment or threats. And I'm sorry if I let anybody down, honestly.
Because harassment is perjudicial, and we can never be in a person's shoes because being harassed. And that is why we have a harassing policy, a special policy. So my question is, what happens when we don't follow our policy?
Again, I think we have to make sure that this qualifies as harassment. We read the policy, we read the definition, we're not, it doesn't qualify, we cannot be...
You're missing out. It's not...
Tim Morgan. Tim Morgan, I'm a parent at a Watten junior high and a high school. First of all, my apologies for what happened. I had no knowledge to that. I have a son at the junior high, and like I said, two other kids too. I would just ask the board that in the future, when you do review this policy, that, you know, we talk here about teachers that are in blue shirts, but really, it's not teachers and it's not students, it's humans. I'm a parent volunteer, I have children, and I have friends that are teachers, and quite honestly, every employee, anybody that sets foot on your property needs to be with the, helped with the same regard. And I can only hope that if it was one of my children that was on that website in that position with his life threatened, that the board, that the administration would not have taken it the same way. But it fears me to know that it might have gone the same direction if it wasn't one of my kids. So I just ask that when you review the policy, that it's not by teacher, by employee, by administrator, by student, that it's by any human that is on that property. Thank you.
Hi, Mark Ricketts, I'm from Lorraine School. I'm not going to prolong this, I just want, hearing you talk, Dr. Hemberder, if it wasn't violated, I think, I just want to stress that it should be rewritten. If it wasn't violated in this instance, you know, I think it needs to be rewritten, and I appreciate that you're considering it. So thank you for your time.
Thanks for all of your contributions and for being here this evening. I think we'll take a short break and a recess to allow folks to, if you have to leave, to go, you're all welcome to stick around for our exciting workshop. But I understand that there's a lot of comments to do, so we'll be back in a bit. And so we've gone through now all the comments section. I don't see if there's any, or any comments to, I think there are, and that would be the time. So if not, we'll move on to our building program report and to Tom Campbell, principal of Exeter. If you don't mind, I'm going to actually speak from up here, and hopefully you can hear me in the background trying to speak up.
Do you have a microphone?
Yeah, I can take it here. With the slides? Yeah, they're on there. It's getting there. Thank you for having me out tonight. Hopefully a chance to take a look at the dashboard slides that were there. I spent a little time to bring some life to those and provide a little context. The big picture is this, that the students in the high school have experienced a lot of consistency in terms of their academic performance over the last several years. What I want to do is try to elaborate a little bit on that, taking a look at their performance with state-handed test, major tests with Keystone, Keystone Alley, Keystone Bio. This, so overall, what we've seen is we've seen on-track performance with our students' achievement, and we've seen mixed results in our growth. We've seen an area of need in our Keystone literature growth and strong performance in our ability to grow kids with their science and math skills. So I wanted to break that down a little bit. There's three sections to this. The first part is demographics. I'm not going to elaborate on that, but I will note that those have not really changed in the past year since you saw similar information a year ago. The next section is on achievement, and this is really taking a look at how our students perform on those Keystone exams. And what you can see on the literature, on the algebra, and on the biology, is that we are right on track with what the state is looking for us to hit, and we're also achieving above state's averages. Because this is a cohort comparison, so there is fluctuation in what we see our students perform. We saw an increase in our students' lit performance last year, an increase in math, and an increase in our biology. And I did choose these images because these are off of the Future Ready TA Index, and I wanted to try to capture as much of that as I could in here. I would encourage you to spend some time looking around that index, and I want to just elaborate a little bit. One of the things that's a little misleading about that is the statewide averages that are contained on the front of their dashboard. You have to scroll down a little bit to understand that the Keystone averages are not, well, they are contained, they're contained in the statewide averages. That statewide average actually covers grades three through 11. So if you want to do a bit of a more apples-to-apples comparison, you really do have to dig in and find the Keystone's. I put those down there for you. So you can see in all cases, we are performing above the state averages for the Keystone's in those three tests. But as a cohort, and there's volatility in there, or variability in there, I did want to take a little more of a longitudinal look, so we scroll into the next set of graphs. That is not the future ready, but this does show our students' performance over the last three years. And there's relative consistency. Just a couple of things to point out, though. This is the group of 10th graders that, generally, this is a group of 10th graders that would have taken the exams that showed up on the previous slide. So you can see a little bit of a bump there. Our Keystone Alley scores have been pretty consistent, as shown here. And our Keystone Bio has been too. There's a slight change in there that we want to watch. I don't know that it's a trend yet, but it's something that we want to look for. That's why we take a look at some of the longitudinal data. Scrolling down a little bit more, one of the other areas that is really emphasized is not just the need to hit proficient, but also try to push kids to reach advanced. And that is another area of measure in the SPP. That shows up here, and again, we've beat the statewide averages. I would add that this is, and lit has not been an area that we have traditionally done, but last year's cohort did. We've been very strong in moving kids to advance in both our algebra and our literature historically, and we continue to do that in last year's exams. Again, this is achievement, so this is going to vary from cohort to cohort, which takes us down to growth, the last area. This allows us to get away from some of that cohort-to-cohort comparisons, and really allows us to take a look at how did a student achieve compared to how a student was projected to achieve? And what we see are mixed, mixed results. In the area of PLA, students did not score as high as they were projected to score on their Keystone exams last year. That was also the case the year before that. We've been digging into that. And what we have seen is some areas of improvement, and I'll show you later how that has improved a little bit, but not significant and not enough. Mrs. Devlin has been working with the English departments, I've truly climbed into that previously. So we've had some changes, but I'm hoping that with some of the work that we're doing to examine the curriculum alignment, particularly as it relates to Keystone anchors, we've started to uncover a few things that we're going to start working with, particularly in our use of vocabulary, some strategies in vocabulary in terms of content, and also approaching the tests. We'll see if that has gains in traction. But in terms of subgroups, we saw a little bit of movement in our Hispanic and economically disadvantaged students this past year in terms of growing in a little bit more. Again, hard to say whether that's a pattern yet. Math, we still do extremely well. Our students are growing at some of the highest levels. And in terms of all the subgroups, we are on track with all of their growth measures as well. Biology, also growing students much higher than what they're projected to score on those tests. We've seen a couple of areas that we're watching, though. Economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities are two areas that we want to watch, some patterns to see whether a gap emerged. Right now, those students are still growing, but not as much as some of the others. Let's go to the last one.
So for those two classes of students that you just mentioned, is the, are the academics apples to apples with the other group that's not economically disadvantaged or are they being taught something different in the classroom?
They're, they're getting the same curriculum, same instruction, they're in the same classrooms, but what is happening is when their scores are registered, we're disaggregating that to see whether their scores, whether their actual scores were as high as what they were projected to be or not. I guess the best way to put it is those students still are achieving, but they're not achieving as, they're not experiencing as much growth. This is great. I mean, what we're seeing is a lot of growth in many of the subgroups and overall. Those are two areas where we haven't seen as much growth. So we want you to see to make sure gaps don't emerge.
So then what I'm getting at is that if indeed there are gaps that do emerge, will you be, you approach them differently?
Oh, yeah.
As a teacher?
And that's sort of part of the challenge, is trying to figure out who those students are and when. What we have here is a general pattern. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's been fit to those students in a classroom because if you're economically disadvantaged student, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're not poised to score well in the test. We're starting to get some of that data available to us with some of the projected probabilities that's available. We're trying to figure out ways to put that into on-hand to get us not user-friendly on the inventory site, but that does give us a little insight about individual students. Because you don't want to generalize too much, you do want to keep that information in your minds, but really what you're talking about is how to differentiate for those individual students in your class, and using that label category they're in may or may not be a good indicator.
You know, would differentiation then come from the same teacher during the same time period?
It could.
Or would we set up? You know, I'm just looking at, again, you know, you have this sort of class size and all this stuff. all this stuff, and when you're trying to differentiate, you've got, you know, lots of different people who you're trying to teach the different skill systems.
It's a challenge, and that's one of the things that we are working with teachers to try to figure out, how do we do that? How do we do that effectively in different classes? In some cases, in the case of biology, we do have some push and support, and I know that those teachers are used effectively for the times that they are there, and they will work in smaller rooms and new stations and support the regular science teacher in that work. Teachers do have a good sense of students who are struggling, and that's the nature of their work, is they're getting that feedback throughout the year. So in a lot of ways, the Keystone really just confirms what we already know, and we work to put those interventions in place as the course progresses. This last slide breaks out growth a little differently. Unlike the, when I was just talking about subgroups, this really takes a look at how students achieved based on where they were projected to score. So I'm not going to go through each of the diagrams, but I want to explain to you what it means so that you can look at it yourselves. Just take a look at algebra for a second, and what you see here are these four sections. These are students who are projected to score below basic, projected to score basic, projected to score proficient, projected to score advanced. What this shows us is that in the darker column, the blue column, that's last year's cohort, those are kids that achieved, scored higher than where they were projected to in each of those levels. What I think is nice about this is it starts to tell us information about students on their projected levels, not just their subgroups. So that's where we start to take a look at students who are generally below ability, who are coming into a class with some gaps, perhaps they may need some interventions, or in some cases, we don't see it as much here, but I've seen others where we start to see a high growth here and students who are not growing as much here. That tells us we're ignoring our advanced students. So you want to take a look at that pattern. What we see here is that, just like I mentioned earlier with E L A, we are not hitting that bar. We have shrunk that gap a little bit last year. I don't know if that's going to continue, that's our goal, but that's moving in that direction. And we've also seen a little bit of a wave here, and that's a group that we want to watch with our biology. So it's just a different way of looking at how we're achieving that growth. But overall, the big picture is achievement has been on track, growth has been strong in science and math, and work is not done in literature.
So when you say "we're watch," who's the "we"?
So we do, I mean, this is because, I mean, I'm just, you know, I know the teachers have, I mean, like, that's a thousand kids to be watching, and I just wonder, you know, how that works. Some of the conversation is like this, when we take a look at these 30,000 views, and the question is, does this match with your on-the-ground view of how students have been achieving? And granted, we get all this, this is too late to work with last year's group, but that is still, it's more recent, it's somewhat recent, and we can still say, alright, so our practices that we were using last year, and were we recognizing this at the time? And in a lot of cases, the responses are, yeah, I had that, these are a couple of things we did, it worked, or it wasn't enough. We also have some more current data that we have. C D Ts are used by the teachers in these tested areas. They have common assessments that they're using so that they can try to stay calibrated with each other inside those courses. I think they're also reflecting on their class assessments beyond those common assessments that they develop themselves or the C D Ts, which are more standardized. So we try to get more real-time data and respond to that as much as we can.
Is it like a department chair-led process? I mean, do they, there's a chair of every sort of department, are they sort of getting their hands dirty, teachers, administrators to, you know, look at this stuff?
There is some of that, but I think the teams that teach these are the ones that are probably most involved with it and in communication. They big with each other when we have early release days to review some of this, and I think they probably do it more frequently than formally figured out in their own, of course, their own days.
Please pay ignorance, but just cohort reference.
That's the, so that, the students that walked across the stage last June would have been that year's cohort. So the reason that we mention it that way is not every student is going to take all of these tests in the same year. Algebra is the best example. So we've got students taking the algebra test in seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade. So their scores, though, end up getting banked, and in terms of the P A, Future Ready P A, which is what we're calling the competitive reporting we had to do, those are banks, and whatever they have at the end of their junior year, that's what they get. So students who may not have scored as well the first time, we end up remediating testing.
Students who don't succeed in passing or become proficient or advanced in their own cohort, do they continue on with their cohort, or do they fall back to the original?
Well, it's not these-
So like, if you take it in ninth grade, are you then going with the 10th grade class the next year when you got through 10th?
These are measures of students' achievement for this test. This is not the whole course. This is not, these are not in and of themselves graduation requirements. These aren't going to retain students by themselves.
But they will theoretically at some point, right?
The, that, are you, if you're asking whether these Keystone exams are going to be-
Well, because the Keystone exams, from my understanding, slated, I don't know if they're yours, but they're the latest accounting to graduation requirements. So we are remediating to the purpose of graduating students now. That has been delayed, I think, several times now. Probably will come back.
So the answer to that is, to a degree. The current sophomores would have been hit by that. I think it's current sophomore, but legislation last summer pretty much abandoned that in ways. Previously, they'd just been kicking it down the road. Last legislation was a pretty significant overhaul of what those graduation requirements would be. That still needs a lot of guidance. We don't know exactly how those are going to be marked out, but the shortest version of it is they're looking at a lot more pathways to beat graduation requirements. So a composite score, inclusion of industry standard testing, even using S A Ts, using classroom grades, so it's, there's a lot of details that we need to get guidance on before we can really implement that at the local level.
What you're saying is theoretically, if you fail algebra, or am I failing algebra? Correct. If you don't score proficient or advanced in algebra three or four times in taking a test, will you still have other avenues for that?
Absolutely.
Do you continue to take the algebra Keystone if you don't get advanced or proficient or just continue on?
We have, students who don't score advanced or proficient the first time will remediate when they, we have to remediate prior to the test. So that's a bit of a challenge. That remediation occurs when they get to algebra two. So typically, students who, typical student in that case, taking it ninth grade and then taking algebra two in 11th grade, taking that retest in the fall, which has completed that wave of testing. And then English, we retest the following year, they test in 10th grade, then we retest the following year because that is a part of English. Biology, we don't have means for remediation, so we do not retest. We used to do that when it was a stricter, when we had that clear guidance that this is going to be a strict, hard and fast graduation requirement, but providing remediation takes away other things that students remove, so that went away with that requirement.
You're saying remediation in biology?
Correct. Thank you.
I want to take the red and blue, just about this. What are we not teaching, or what are, or add or what are our students not, what are, and red is very annoying.
Yeah, I think it's intended to be. And that's what we're really trying to figure out. We were working to try to understand whether our curriculum is aligned with the test and what the exit test-
Well, yeah, you said that. What is writing? Is it analyzing? Is it reading skills? Speaking? What are we talking about?
I don't think we have a clear answer on that.
The literature test is solely a reading assessment, but the analysis of what they're reading, so there's very little writing involved except for short response passages. And so there's a section, one module is for fiction and one module is for informational texts. We run fairly parallel through successes with both of those. But also to Mr. Williams' question, Ms. Heather Mills, the department chair for the senior high school, I spent a full day together kind of analyzing previous successes and challenges that we're seeing with the results from Keystone, looking at what assessment anchors we need to address that maybe gaps in the curriculum are starting to, to really dig into that.
Okay, I stole my phone. Former writing teachers used to do this.
I can vote for example of the assessment.
But what is it that they're not getting? Is it reading, reading a text and a mischievous reading, or just not knowing how to do it?
The really challenging part about the Keystone is they only report in basically two areas for reading of informational texts and two for fiction, which is how well they're reading and how well they're analyzing. So beyond that, we have to really dig into the more local assessments to determine where the gaps really are with kids. P S As days, we get this beautiful breakdown of all of the assessment anchors. With the literature assessment, it's simply those four areas that we can look at, and it doesn't give us a lot to go on.
Could you, could you update us periodically?
Absolutely.
Because this, this affects kids who want to go to college, kids who want to take the S A Ts. When does this instruction start?
These ninth and 10th grade years of curriculum are what are assessed on the 10th grade Keystone for literature.
And what about before ninth and 10th?
P S As every year.
Are they learning how to write?
Absolutely. Mode-specific writing and narrative, informational or argumentation, and fictional texts, as well as the analysis required for the secondary analysis.
This, what I hear anecdotally from teachers during my campaign, and since I've been in the board this day, we stress writing early on, but it falls apart seventh, eighth, ninth grade. It's not stress. Thank you.
I have a question. Is there any type of, like, from the Keystone's themselves, do they give you like a suggestion of some sort of software or some kind of, something to follow so you can improve your consistency on?
They give us, they give us the standards, and then we build a curriculum based on those standards, and we assess based on those standards to see where we see the gaps are with our kids, and that's the local data that gives us more, but the state home endorsed software programs, curriculum, anything other than the standards that are the basis of, that are the basis for our curriculum.
So you're kind of shooting in the dark, basically?
Yes and no. I mean, when you look at the skills required by those standards, it gives us a lot of guidance. Where we go with that is really determined locally by the curriculum that we built. So on a Keystone exam, they're tested with a short passage of literature or a fiction text, asked to respond to a series of multiple choice questions, and then complete one written response that really is limited to only needing to be about a paragraph and less because the assessment for writing went away years and years ago when the P S A left the high school.
So just to answer your question also, it's not like the P S A T where you take the P S A T and then you get this prescriptive button where you can go into Khan Academy or something like that and they give you a page with questions. They don't offer that. I think that's probably what I was hearing with the question, and they don't offer that.
We have the C D Ts that look a lot like the same questions on the Keystone, and we utilize that data extensively to try to determine where those gaps are and how much part of our local data is gone.
Really, really down this a little bit more. We're not saying we want to improve the score for the sake of improving the score. We want to improve the score for student achievement and for the sake of success at collegiate level or post, post-secondary, post-secondary education. I think that's high school, yeah. Are we confident that our localized assessments are looking for that? Because my concern would be, we see a lot of our localized assessments, I think, at the elementary levels that do well, and that's what I've heard anecdote, whereas our P S A scores show something different. So are we confident that our localized assessments are really looking at what we want students to be achieving, or is there a disconnect between what Keystone's are testing for and what we think that it's important is to be excellent for?
It's my, it's only my opinion, so I'm still working on all of those things of secondaries.
No, I think you're absolutely right, and that is that alignment process that we're going through to consider to the, to our curriculum, match our assessments and instruction, match what those anchors are on that Keystone. And especially given the limited feedback that we get from students' performance on the Keystone, we're putting a lot of faith in that alignment having some sort of effect. And I think, sorry, but I think overall, the Keystone anchors are, I don't think we're going to find this, I think we were in agreement that those are valid, they're standard-based and our improvement should be standardized too, so we do need to go through the process every month to confirm that that alignment's there and that we're teaching it.
But to speak to your, the basis of your question, when I look at the standards for secondary E L A, and I, I've kind of framed this through the lens of, you know, the Common Core has been kind of that big example to many people for a long time. The first question I might ask is, which of those things do you not want your students to know and be able to do? It's being able to read, it's being able to think and analyze what you're reading, it's being able to make discerning opinions between things. Those are the skills that we know our kids in this era absolutely 100% need to be able to play in. And because the writing system is not as emphasized, what I can't say in the high school English department, and from everything I've seen, they're doing a lot of work in that area. So that's not something that because it's not tested has been cast aside at all.
Where, where are these kids now? The kids who are represented by that red bar? Where are 10th grade, 11th grade?
This, this particular group, this would have been a reflective, or this would have been a measure of the 11th, last year's 11th grade cohort. So this group are currently seeing-
Currently seeing. So are we doing any kind of rescue one, emergency work to help them? Actually, instead of just waiting to sort of revamp the whole program, then they graduate and they go to high school?
That's a great question. So they, they continue to have their English curriculum, and this is the thing that's tricky about this, in terms of their achievement, this group's achievement was actually high in snake growth, and so that's where we're trying to figure out, why weren't they, why wasn't their, why weren't their scores as high as they were projected to be? And, but they, they do continue in their curriculum. They've got four years of English, and that's where we go back to making sure that that curriculum is aligned exactly with what we want it to be, we're delivering exactly what we have in this curriculum, assessing it to get that feedback on the way, which hopefully lead to us seeing that growth in one of these contestants.
Just to add a point of clarity, that what you're looking at, and certainly there's work to be done, and I think you're hearing that from all of us, but this is a snapshot of one measure, and if you were to just look at this, you would have this very alarmist perspective that our, our students are not somewhat making a grade for language arts. And while on this particular measure, that is true, I just want to give the added context that when you look at our students' S A T scores, as an example, they are competitive within the county and surrounding areas. So it's, while this obviously suggests that there's work to be done, it also is a snapshot of one test and one type of test, and this particular test is not getting anybody into college. The S A Ts, which are debatable about how much colleges are looking at them, but are certainly being looked at more readily than this test, our students are competitive with those around the county and in the surrounding areas. So just as a piece of context, when you, when you look at this score, obviously suggests there's work to be done, but also I wouldn't want anyone to come away from the presentation with a sense that, you know, we're in a tailspin in terms of language arts, and our students are actually selecting colleges, going to their colleges, and so I just wanted to add that little piece.
And I think to, to add to that, you know, I would also echo that we're, we're always trying to find that balance between recognizing that we teach children and we're teaching the entire child, and trying to ensure that when they graduate from Exeter, that they graduate with a well-rounded education. And yes- And yes, that means that subjects that have a Keystone test associated with them, we need to make sure we understand what's being assessed and we need to make sure we understand the standards. There are other really valuable things that are happening in our classrooms that maybe are not assessed on a Keystone exam, that are really, really valuable skills that our students are going to take into the workplace or into secondary, or into their post-secondary degree and have a lot of success with. I've seen our creative expressions course, which is part of the English department at Shiloh Hills Elementary in Golston School District, doing a fractured fairy tale, you know, where they completely get up, do the entire performance. That's speaking skills, that's that whole piece, which is such a critical component in today's, you know, landscape. Several of us were at the engineering design thing last night at the senior high. You watch those students talk through that problem solving. And I turned Dr. Hamburger and I said, I wish, you know, I would have had the skills in math and physics, et cetera, to do problem solving. That doesn't happen because we have great Keystone scores. That happens because the really good instruction and the problem solving skills that are being taught in those STEM classes with Zach Potter and folks down in that department are helping grow kids. So to kind of echo what Jason has said, I'm not diminishing the scores. I share the same concerns about the red in ELA, and we're going to work towards improving that for sure, and we are taking the necessary steps to do so. But I just want to make sure we're mindful of the fact that what teachers are doing in the classrooms and the teaching that we're providing kids, it's much bigger than a Keystone growth score or a Keystone achievement score. And, you know, there's a reason why I think we continue to see Exeter students shine in things like Science Olympia and other events, where we constantly see examples, athletics, music, extracurriculars. I was at a band concert last week with them, those kids performed. I mean, there are countless examples, I don't mean to give all of them, but, you know, I think it's important that we look at this through a balanced lens like that because we're teaching whole children and they're doing pretty amazing things.
Well, that's great to hear, so let's have a report on that sometime.
Yeah, concurring with John, you know, you guys are highlighting some of the successes that we're having elsewhere, whereas this, like you were saying, is an alarmist score. I think we definitely need to do a better job of having some type of composite analysis to look at the whole picture. Now, I want to be careful because I could start listing things that I think might work, and I have no background in this whatsoever, and I could probably come up with a pretty, you know, probably like 10 or 12 different things, and I don't think we need to use all of our time looking for 10 or 12 different measurements. But I really think that the administration needs to come up with something that they have confidence in, that pushes up where this might fall down a little bit. And some of that data may not be quantitative, it may be qualitative, but when you're talking about the lens that we view this from, this is the lens that we view this from. And we can see anecdotally the students that come up here to the podium, or the students that are at these showcases like the ones that we were at last night. But I think we all know that our high achievers are going to achieve highly. I don't know if that was proper, but let's go with that. But I think, you know, some of our concern has to be the students who are in the sticky middle, students who are not going to get extra help, but they're not coming into extra programs. And I don't know how large that sticky middle is at Exeter, because when I was in, I know that there's a huge amount of participation in sports and extracurriculars and those different things. But those are the students that we really want to have an effect on and we want to make sure that we're not neglecting. And I wonder if the data that we're going to be able to see through this is going to speak to that more than what we can just get from looking at the Keystone with the PSSAs.
It's a good point, Hunter. And we're also in the process of doing our comprehensive planning process. Our revised comprehensive plan is due to the state in November of 2020. And so building principles are in the process of scheduling their building level plan, which will then comprehensively build into a larger district plan. And we've had conversations with our principals about, you know, what kinds of things to consider to kind of create that whole picture of how we're measuring ourselves, you know, as a district in terms of, you know, success, both with the quantitative data points and then some of the more, you know, qualitative measures that also we can see. You know, I think it's certainly a fair point to, you know, look for opportunities to showcase that entire picture, you know, as both, even also Mr. Flotter touched on, in terms of what that looks like and getting opportunities to do that. And we've done some of that at previous board meetings, we've had, you know, different organizations come out, but we can, we can even some of the academic pieces as well and provide a clear picture for those. It's good to see that.
And I think there should, there should not be a shortage of data either to work with.
Right.
And it's not creating new methods as far as I can tell. It's selecting what data really dimes and covers what we may not see.
Okay, let's wrap this up, sir. Anyone else have time to ask a final question? If not, I'm done. That's your job. Thank you. Appreciate the feedback and conversation.
Thanks.
Thanks, nice presentation.
We're going to move on in our agenda this evening. Going to reject into a board which reflects four sets of minutes, which is the briefing next week, where we are making eight reading minutes for workshop minutes for the third and voting minutes of December 17th. Also be looking at policies. Most of these are under first reading or they're marked for deletion. Just going to go through quickly, maybe some of the highlights, what we see of the policies that were up for first reading at this time. First one you see there is suspension expulsion. This isn't really, changes to this really aren't what you might expect them to be. There's a provision in this policy that speaks to the compulsory school age of students, and because of some changes in the law, there's a change where, you know, the starting age of students changed and the age which opposed to exit school, in terms of compulsory school attendance changed as well, as the date eighteen. So that's the primary change in this policy, nothing substantial related to suspension and expulsion. There is some optional language that's in there that needs to be reviewed by our administrators, so we're giving that the attention of our administrative team. Please take a look at this policy. It does have some items that need to be examined and there's some bracketed language that needs to be selected for this policy, so that needs to be on the agenda for next Tuesday. Moving down into the next policy, A18, which is contracted service personnel, this is a new policy. It has to do with obtaining background checks and requirements for criminal history and child abuse for contracted service personnel. So it goes into employment history, arrest reports, child abuse recognition, reporting on training, and compliance code that goes under the job child protective services law. I am, eight nineteen is suicide awareness and prevention and response. There's some things that are added there to add better clarity and policy structure. A lot of it has to do with current research recommendations for best practice. There is an AR guide, and I think I shared that with you. So if you look at that, you say that's pretty much what we're using. I hope we attach that then to this policy, that AR guide, which suicide response. And some of the, some of the language in our former policy was eliminated because it appeared to be a little bit received or likely to have the.
Mr. Quick question, Mr. Flotter. Still being familiar with technology, first reading, that doesn't mean that this is a new policy.
It may be a new policy or might not be. The first reading is anytime we're reconsidering, we do the existing policy, we're considering a brand new policy. We have two readings that we have to go through, which is essentially two months of examination. So first reading, we will approve for first reading, we'll stand, let's set on the table for an additional month. And then at the end of that month, that's the second reading, and the second reading is the actual approval of policy.
Thanks.
Eight twenty-two is the AED, AED and CPR policy that was updated to, they've updated the entire policy with some clearly regarding CPR and compliance with the school code. So a lot of it that's in there could probably be used as a supplement to the policy. And in this particular case, because it's kind of a bridge, I think we really should take what exists and turn that into an AR. So again, put a signal to administration to really take a close look at this in terms of for, you know, an AR, an administrative regulation. Eight twenty-four, maintaining professional and whole student boundaries, this is a brand new policy. And it really kind of clarifies the kind of relationships that should exist between adults in the school, whether they're teachers, support staff, administrators, re-volunteers in relation to students. And that has to do with things like communication, emails, behavior, and ongoing relationships that need to be always being professional. And it doesn't, what we understand could be evidence of harassment or abuse. Our deal question.
I guess more, yeah.
Please have questions.
Is this policy creating mechanisms for pending student rights or employee rights that we don't already have elsewhere? Is this summarizing it toward an extension? I guess the reason I ask this is, just the level of detail, I think it's definitely good to have this as a lot of guidance. And I just worry, there were some things in here that I just worry about. Point two, I think it's number sixteen on page three out of six. I think it's an excellent guidance, and I think it's probably a good rule for staff to practice. But, you know, when I was thinking about this, I was just trying to create counterpoints in my mind, because I naturally do that as a contrarian. And I'm thinking to myself, you know, if the teacher were to say something in the midst of two students talking about this while they're in a teacher's room, because that's where they hang out maybe in the morning, and they're just talking about their own relationship, and the teacher were to say, look, some young men just aren't mature enough or something, you know, all of a sudden you come into a scenario where you're into this policy. To me, it just seems like some of those things are, and maybe this is part of the problem, but it just seems like they're natural preferences. Now, obviously, taking a student into your home is not a natural one. So it's not an issue with the entire policy. I guess I'm just trying to understand.
It's an interesting policy, I would agree. I mean, it really does lay out a lot of, almost like examples of what you shouldn't do. What you described there was, you know, the header to that whole list indicated that these are sort of the types of behaviors that sort of would be a violation of the professional boundaries, you know, between a student and adult. So, you know, I don't know whether we're going to hold somebody for the letter of the law and sort of point to a specific behavior and say, you know, you just violated item sixteen, you know, in policy number eighty-one or something like that. I think that's, I don't think that's the intention, because really, I think this is something that is helpful for training, it's helpful for notification, it's something the teacher should read and understand, it really helps to clarify boundaries, I think. It's very easy to understand, particularly the ease of communication we have. If you slip into, let's say, correspondence that is not related to schoolwork, or you start to demonstrate kind of behaviors that we've seen before that might be associated with grooming a student, you know, those are things that we really have to watch out for. So I like the policy. I would not encourage us to over-interpret it or take it to the extreme. It's got its costs.
But a policy is often taken literally, so I think either we need to, one thing I'm not going to do is put a policy out there and say, eh, it's open for interpretation. What you're trying to do with a policy is not have that open for interpretation.
Some of these are hard, though. Some of these are hard to really kind of actually identify. But I think that, I think all of them have some level of, I mean, if you see something that's obviously wrong here, let's, you know, let's identify what it is, and, you know, if we think it's problematic, let's identify it and maybe modify it in some manner. I think all these points are important, instructive. And, you know, I think it's incumbent upon our administrative team to make sure that our teachers are literate and literate. And I think that this is distributed periodically, and I think there's actually a perspective requirement in here for training and distributing the policy.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at a policy, there are some things like sending or accompanying a student on a personal basis, providing to the students or adults at home. There are scenarios that it is like, it can be interpreted, you know, in certain ways. And you do have to be careful with, because I'm really kind of figuring out, us as a board, are we supposed to be that specific? Is there any in terms of, and maybe this can be kind of like a level where it's more of the administrative rules on this setting.
Yeah, I think the prior policy was just as you're describing. It was more generative, more general. PSBA is recommending a policy that's much more specific and clarifies some of the subtleties of what might be applied in some of those relationships. But again, if you see something here that's really would be representative, a really impossible call. And the other thing to recognize here is the disciplinary activity, once they ban these things, is really, you know, not real well-defined either. I mean, there could be minor disciplinary sanctions such as putting a letter in somebody's file all the way through termination. It really depends upon severity and extent and the accuracy of the, you know, of the action on the part of the included or the policy.
I would say speaking as a forward-appointed advocate for youth and collective kids, this policy has really goes a long way to protect our students.
That's the premise.
And I think, I think the specificity is appropriate.
Yeah, I just think you can't interpret things. You said something earlier, but I don't know. I mean, it either is or it isn't. I mean, what's going to happen here is that a student will experience something, go up here, a parent will pull up the policy, call out that specific thing, bring it to the school district, point it out, and we'll say, hmm, not just, I mean, I just, I, so we're going to do it, then, I know we conduct this, you know, investigation and all that kind of stuff, but just saying, there's a lot to be.
Bill, it certainly holds adults to a high standard, I'll say that. And I think if you abide my concern up to the others, I don't think you are making a problem. This would be, I think, really important warning for anybody who really, you know, who plays on the edges, you know, with student relationships. And I think it's helpful now, you know, this is designed to protect students from abuse.
Yeah, I think, I think if there are areas where it's not specific enough, I have to, I have to do more specific language. What you suggest, I would want to ensure that we're not eliminating a protection, potential protection for the kids.
Why don't we discourage anybody from submitting comments? You know, we've got, you know, beyond next week, we've got a full month, you know, to kind of continue review and explore if there's something in this policy that you would like us to, you know, as a policy committee to reexamine, when you got, and this is a policy I think that we probably would have some level of discretion in terms of how we modify some of the legislation.
I think Bill would argue that, I take, I take your point about the level of specificity that this goes. Other than the sixteen, the other example that I had in my mind was, you know, what if two girls in class are talking about, like, I eventually want kids or something, and the teacher then reveals that her husband are trying to, you know, you come into an example where you violated part of the policy. And I think that this list is definitely good because, you know, that's something that you want to, I think, not disclose. And I wonder if that would just be better served with the policy being generalized and maybe an administrative regulation that includes guidance that teachers are trained on, or there needs to be some type of document that's submitted every teacher wanting to hire or something like that. I'm just concerned that, like Mike was saying, that this can be taken literally, and that can draw. Mike was saying, that this can be taken literally. And that can draw on any type of action from parents coming here to express their concerns. And, you know, maybe a subtle way to do it would just be to allow vote of counseling that needs to be noted in some way by the principals as part of the disciplinary action. I don't, I don't look too deeply to see if that's in there. But I think that that would, the example that I just pointed out would probably, in my mind, rise to the occasion of, you know, the building principles and people. That's not the kind of thing that you want to reveal in the actual classroom environment.
Yeah. Well, there's not a whole lot of this, from what I can tell, I don't think there's a whole lot of this policy that's actually reflected in school code. So, you know, I think there's discretion here. So, a lot of it, I think, can be up to this board in terms of how much of that content we can actually include in here. And I think we have, John's point is it can't be inclusive enough. And Hunter's perspective is, you know, it should be maybe more, maybe, I mean, Mike was saying the same thing. Maybe maybe not keep it.
Is there a, is there a model that we can look at, other school districts that we see that need?
There may be. This may be a, one of those things that is promoted by P S B A. We don't check the P S B A and ask them to send us, and, you know, this is, you know, updated. So the issue, you have to point out when is their language updated, when is it, you know, for example, also realize that you have to have elements of this that probably would be the best practice, correct, and think.
I always think that rest of the discussion is, you know, through this, so, you know, sort of kids.
Would you take, would you take us down with that? Would you take us down with that? We can ask, we can get us some sample language. Anybody else is welcome to jump on any other school district website and look up this whole specific policy. I think we'll probably find it. So those are the, those are the policies that are going to be included. The rest of the policies are marked for deletion. And I'll say very generally, not going into any detail, that those are marked for deletion for, by the board, are those that have content that is viewed as primarily procedural and more applicable to administrative regulations. So the, whatever language you have, that policy will be integrated into the A R. That's the recommendation. Again, that will be up to the administration to kind of look around at.
Dave, I don't need a, need a dead horse. I know I'm cutting in my own time with this. But going back to some of the policy concepts that we heard from the association, you know, I think that there's probably some cause to reexamine at least the three policies that were mentioned, to see if there's some changes that we need to maybe fit into what the character of Exeter's district is. You know, three in specific that I heard was reexamining our procedures regarding the notification of law enforcement, how our administration is supporting employees on the building over the central level, and also public notification. I'm not convinced one way or the other here there need to be those changes, but I think based on the situation. And I think it's very true that we're likely to face something like this. Our, not only is Exeter School District, you know, struggling with this now, but, you know, this, these kind of issues are being faced statewide, nationwide. You know, they're issues of national security that are involving similar situations. This is maybe something that we can use as a model to kind of prepare ourselves for the future and kind of in place of legal counseling. And maybe we want to provide some of that to the board to help us understand where we are at. Because very often, you know, we wouldn't be able to go in there and replace the definition of harassment to mean something that we think it should mean. The school code doesn't allow us to do that.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, I think the, the policies that they had described, you know, the law for harassment, terroristic threats, you know, those are pretty concrete policies. Those are pretty well-established, you know, and embedded in school code and case law. So there's another policy that was the reference which had to do with, you know, students' freedom of expression, you know, which may be something that we need to kind of take a look at, you know, particularly when that student's, you know, expression represents a material or substantial impact on, you know, the smooth operation of the school district. Those are, those are one of the few, that's one of the few situations where, you know, a student's expression can be managed and controlled and found to be inappropriate, you know, when it impacts on the operation of the school district. And in this particular case, you know, we could almost make an argument, you know, for that, that there was a substantial disruption.
Or, or, or.
In the future. So maybe some clarification, you know, the reference was thrown out there, First Amendment. This is so-called First Amendment. At what point does that First Amendment, you know, reach into, and, even when it occurs outside of the school system, in which case this apparently did, you know, at what point does that, does that have an access to school operations? And, you know, there's, there's an expectation that we should respond through discipline, particularly when we know that we perpetrate this. In this case, a little complicated, because there's that part, you know, for the truth. And that's another, that could be another policy issue.
Just going to refer you back to my comments from December seventeenth, that I did raise that issue at the last board meeting. So there's two paragraphs worth of comments for maybe looking at some of these items.
I will say that I see that one of the things that are marked for deletion is the policy eight fifteen point one of this. It does have something about social networking is kind of inappropriate times with us that it's occurring on this. And they do have some areas in here talking specifically about, you know, harassment and some other areas. Maybe we need to take a look about like how websites are used, blogs, social networking capabilities. So if you look through the policy here, maybe we should think about where are we going to put this. This basically says the mark for deletion on the part and make it more of a, like you said, an A R where it's going to be kind of put in there. So if you read through the policy, maybe we need to think about whether we should keep this in our policies or not. I don't know if that's possible. But if you read through this, it kind of interacts with the current situation that we're dealing with.
That's certainly a possibility. There's no, there's no requirement for us to delete this policy. The, you know, when I look at the rationale for eliminating it from P S B A, you know, it basically talks about the fact that it's just highly procedural and not recommended policy and should be placed under eight fifteen. So eight fifteen, those go into, probably, related technology, but not, maybe specifically as this does. And so it's relevant to us. I feel it really has meaning and value, plus a warning.
Dave, real quick, and again, not to beat a dead horse, can we maybe identify some type of soft timeline or start that process in order to know whether that be a work for the workshop, the type of variations, as a matter of fact?
Yeah, I mean, some of this stuff, I'm probably thinking that it might be helpful if we could, I don't know, meet as a policy committee. I mean, Yuri and I are on the committee. All board members are certainly invited. I mean, we set up a date to sit down, really kind of dig into the policies. It'll be a public meeting, so of course we can apply it as well. All right, let's, let us, let us figure out, maybe, the product of that, maybe have the recommendations for the board. Are there any other questions or thoughts about any of these policies?
I was going to ask about policy eight nineteen, suicide awareness. Have they implemented and re-edited a number for suicide prevention yet? I don't know. And if they have, is that something we should be including in this? Have they now changed the phone number, or they are changing the phone number to, I believe, ninety-eight?
A lot of times, you know, I think that guideline, there's an A R that is probably better suited for that because that's more adaptable to change as necessary. And that's what we use it for a lot of information where it might be, it might become obsolete quickly, you know, as things change. ARs don't require, I mean, they're true, they don't require a human process. So that would be my guess. Sue, I don't know if you want to take a look at that.
I'll take a look into that part of it.
Pardon?
I'll take a look into the number that she mentioned.
Okay.
Did you see that come with the policy at the very end, your site and the phone number?
Yeah. You mean, on our current policy, or?
On the new one.
With the new policy?
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, we've had a little bit of discussions, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Aaron.
Well, you know, as promised, the first item here is a discussion of our initial takeaways from the budget stakeholder meetings. I can go first. Obviously, we are, the hours eight fifty-two are, our pumpkins may be turning from their carriages sooner rather than later. So if you can be concise, I think that'd be appreciated. And I'll try and read that and scroll around a little bit. People want to volunteer, be told. I think the biggest takeaway for me, first of all, I think, I think this has been a beneficial process. I think some of the questions may need to be fine-tuned if we were to do something like this in the future, to try and cut more to core some of these issues. Because I think what I've seen so far is that the staff attending and the community members attending have been able to take deep breath the issues that are underneath some of the questions that we're looking at, you know, identifying areas of cutting. I think we've definitely heard that music is something that is precious, like a character of Exeter, in ways that maybe it isn't in other districts. I'm not sure. But I definitely think that that's something that I've been hearing definitely from the community, and I've grown up with around here as well. You know, I've also heard a lot about supporting the presence of agents in classrooms, especially at the elementary level. The reexamination of technology is probably, I don't want to say universally after the first meeting, but certainly in that first meeting is one that I've heard it ever taken, reexamining how we're spending money there and the use that it's having in classrooms and to what effect it is, if it's worthy to continue investing in that. And I think that's an area that I think the administration should definitely pursue, to see if even our practices need to change for that as well, instead of just cutting some purchases this year only to return next year. Other than that, you know, I think it's been helping to have the dialogue. There are a couple of things that I refer to Patrick, including comments from one teacher talking about the ability for some of these new policies and new strategies and new pursuits that the administration is having to kind of stick and be taken in or bought into by the teachers before new strategies are added on top of that, which I think is very helpful here and different things like that. You know, I think we're going to have to continue to maybe drive home a little bit that we do need to find areas where we can find some consensus for the community to raise expenses. And I think that that's something we might want to strive for in some of these later meetings. But those were my thoughts so far. I don't know who wants to go next. I can't fault anyone. You need to.
I would say I was pleased with the way we advertised it. I felt that we did get it out there to the people. I would like to see more parents there, but I was happy with what the outcome was. I was a little disappointed that we didn't get a ticket for the second meeting, you know, what happened there. And I was excited about hearing what people had to say and their ideas. And I think it's very helpful to continue.
Want to take a crack at it, John?
Sure.
Yuri, you want to take a crack at it?
Actually, I enjoyed the meeting. It was very good to interact. It was my first time, pleasure in going to the first meeting. Then I'm actually the official school board director. There's some challenges today. And it's hard to, everyone's, and this is my feedback, and that maybe somebody else will agree with this, it's very hard to cut things that people have an emotional tie to. And everyone has an emotional tie to everything for one reason or another. And you kind of have to look at it from what is the greater good and what is the balance between the two. And you're going to always have to disappoint somebody. And that's a problem with that because you don't want to disappoint anybody. But cuts are, you know, have to take place. We have to do things. But we can't lose our character. We can't lose who we are as a school district in return for that, that area, for those things. So I would love to hear that of, you know, some people that has some real tangent ideas that won't, that won't sacrifice, how do I say it? That won't sacrifice who we are. And that's the hardest part of it, that I think I would love to hear. I'd love for people to come, send us something, some information that makes us feel that we're still keeping a high caliber of being an extracurricular township, and at the same time, being able to not lose all the things that we are. Because there are some policies that we can use that will actually make a good idea, maybe make us even, but that's kind of what I want to do.
Hunter, I would just say collectively, you say what you're saying, and Yuri said it, sort of, you know, left me ambling on it, a little bit.
You know, we have to agree with all of that as well. One of the parents that you take on, that's, it depends on, you know, what your, their child, his or her child is in, as whether that is important. If one person felt that there was too much emphasis on music or too many programs of music, not enough of art. But then the parent who has children that feel that music is very valuable, you know, they feel that way. So I think that all dialogue, discussions, and everything is very good in getting the community involved. But what I love is that, no one wants anything but, Billy, I'm just looking at the website that's sent, and the only one thing that was maybe was to look at electives that have low numbers and maybe look at, you know, not tabos or alternating, you know, semesters or years of what they're taught. So, you know, I thought you guys said maybe we should look at that. But other than that, you know, somebody said, "Well, maybe you have to make sports and then something else about it." You know, we need all the sports and there's research to support all of that. But Jay, I can still keep talking about it.
How much Sharon said regarding the activities, are we evaluating that early enough with that and seeing participation and whether it's worth keeping, maybe for?
Well, I think some of the evaluation that maybe you're looking for probably hasn't started in earnest yet. I, after, after we're done, I might give a little bit of a snippet of what business functions is going to start doing next week, with Jan's guidance and what the committee has kind of come up with. In terms of that specific issue, we have, my plan is to send out some type of an informal survey to all the board members for your ideas. And that's certainly one that we can look at.
And is there a, can anyone answer that? Are we looking at that at all?
I can remember last spring, the junior high, I believe, was cut about two hundred and fifty-ish, and they were up to three hundred and thirty students that were in the extracurricular program. So there's, there's a high number of students that do available results of our extracurriculars. We can get specific numbers, yes.
We can get specific numbers, yes.
I just, my question from the first meeting was about, should we revise our curriculum to focus on just the requirements of chapter four? And just to share that, the resounding answer to that was no, and that we want well-rounded children. We want to be able to give opportunities to students that might shine, might not shine in some scholastic areas and other areas. And if that will, what we take away, if we take these away, is going to make our district less respectable.
Well, thanks, Hunter. I'll go last. Everybody, real quick. So, I mean, my impression is much the same. You know, my objective is to really try to pull out from our discussions those little nuggets of maybe creativity, out of the box thinking that might be evident from the people who are sitting around the table. And as you all found, I mean, everybody seemed to be positioned to kind of maintain what they liked. I don't know if they hated it a little, they loved too much. But occasionally, my question, I was question number one, which was, you know, trying to figure out, you know, something's desirable but has no standards to support it. What are your thoughts about if they're working in the district? And is there any opportunity to eliminate some of these programs or reduce, you know, these programs? And I'll just go through some of these, some of the ones that I heard about. I mean, some of the comments first brought it out, my one table about STEM at the elementary level and how the perception was that has maybe a little impact, as well as the one-on-one program which is a K-4. And if there would be any, let's say, lowering of a priority, that might be part of it. They talked about copiers, you know, and trying to reduce dependence on making copies for the partial purposes. And also about the number of copies that are sent home every day as opposed to things that were sent electronically. Talked about the replacement of technology and hardware, and maybe it's not absolutely necessary to replace everything, but it's not broken. Not necessarily important to replace it. Same thing in furniture, you know, as long as it's safe, not necessarily essential to, you know, replace it. They talked about, again, back to copiers, creating a paperless system as opposed to paper that we consume all the time, even here in Board Game. You know, we just constantly, you know, rely on paper. Some organizations have found a way with it in its entirety. And Tim Morgan, oh, Tim's still here, but his wife works at OJ Robinson. Tim was saying that that school district has implemented a paperless system, K-2. And it's, you know, after its initial assessments, it's working very successfully. So, it can be done, and it is being done by various systems. There's some discussion about pay to play, particularly like in areas like band drinks, who does tell or is precipitated, so it has to be a way to answer the band. A question about, you know, addition of books to the library, other technology that might be less costly, such as alternative psychology. You know, and I'll just say, without going into further detail, I include all this in my report to Patrick. So, you know, I'm sure as you all have, that information is going to show up in this report. And rather than me continuing, that's pretty much a consistent throughout. But again, my motivation was to try to pull out some idea, you know, that might maybe start to work with, which are, but I think it was a good, good discussion.
Well, thank you. I definitely took notes on that, and I'll be watching for Patrick's submissions from us to make sure that we integrate that as far as we possibly can with the Business Functions Committee as we're moving forward. Tonight, you'll probably be receiving an email poll, another packet full of information, because I definitely will need to go through those too. And it will probably include the committee's goals, which technically are just about finalized, typically the administration's really started working with us to try and refine them further. And that those are cloud, and my hope is next Tuesday. And those are the goals that we're going to pursue. So, those goals include cost reduction, ways to try and go ahead and create a certain cost investment. So, those are evolving, I think, as well. And like I mentioned before, my desire is to try and do some type of survey for members of the board to try and understand where your thoughts are. If we want to produce products, I think it would be administration at the end of the day to conform consensus. And the consensus that I hear is that we have a desire for a reduction or we want to do it in a way that maintains the core, who we are, the district, the safety, which is a challenge. There's no two ways about that, and I think we're all caught in it. And I think we come from different schools of thought. John, Dave and I, and I know the administration's going to be helping to refine those down. And I know that the board is going to be involved in that process intimately as well. So, we're looking forward to the year ahead. Other than that, there are a few items that will be on the voting agenda, including the certification of the delinquent taxes for 2019. I think it's really notable to look at Exeter Township's smaller rate of collection slightly than St. Hart's, and how much of the district is distanced. Well, the amount is not a slight difference. The rate of collection is a slight difference, and that's, there are some ongoing issues there. We'll also have a recommendation from the solicitor and the administration regarding settlements. And there will be budget transfers, you can mention yours as well. I just had a quick question about the budget transfers. In there, I think there was an expense for a little bit over $25,500 for bus users. That included our installation of cameras on, I was guessing the sun, I don't know if that's correct though.
Right, all the stuff on cameras, and because, because some standard definition cameras need to, I don't know, to go as, to go behind.
Thank you, Dan. That is all I have. Andy, you want to add anything? I didn't want to jump on the spot, I just wanted to make sure I covered it all.
I just want to thank Ann for her efforts on the assessment appeal for Walmart compared to the district settled for, but she did a great job in that. It is disappointing that our businesses continue to seek junket relief around their taxes. I mean, it's a hundred and something thousand dollars in the district to ask me to cut the Walmart and not the school district this year or something. But anyway, I do appreciate the effort. You went through to get the settlement.
It would be nice for this to be, to spend a part of the process.
Yeah, I have a question, but I have one question too. I know that we received our recent budget, or cost data, open. Is there anything to report on that? Will you be reporting on that at some point?
I get all the data that I'd like, you know, to have prepared for next Tuesday. We have the possibility of approving or voting on a decision in February and stuff. She's, you know, the, um, bids and time for all. So, it has evaluated bids. I have some questions for Alex Katz on the awards because both not completely in the specifications, but after he got them next week, I have all the information. But also considering propane, I'm trying to gather data along that line. So, I do want to show the cost to the district. So, I'm hoping to be able to do short reports Tuesday.
Just a reminder too, I can run into some things about this particular bid. Was that we, it was a little more diverse than in the past. We include leasing and propane options, you know, which, you know, I think are going in the direction where we're kind of hoping to be able to.
Thank you for pointing this out as part of it. These purchase would straighten municipal office fees.
Excellent, excellent. Personal committee, Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, next week we will be voting on evaluations of support staff, retirement of certificated staff, employment of support staff, computer staff, certificate substitutes and support substitutes, change of status in support staff, leave of absence for two employees, or of course, request of a conference request. And I just have a quick question on our leave of absence. For intermittent leave for the, can someone explain that to me?
So, you know, in N F M L?
Yes.
Okay, so basically that is if an employee needs to use that, that means there may be times they have to leave just an hour a day, two hours a day. It's not like they're taking a full lot of time for full days. It's just like, you know, maybe they have their own mental reasons, family, and they have to take them to an appointment. And it's just intermittent as needed.
And so, they don't use that time?
Uh, for something like that, you know, would you like to have an example of some time period? So, it's just like somebody left off on a beautiful day, and they just need to leave two hours of the time.
Does that fall under the N F M L?
Yes, it would be, it's called the N F M L.
Okay, so be cumulative then, right? Yeah, follow that policy, or just add up over time?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, Business Functions, and Michelle's not here this evening, but there will be a report on field trips within a 60-mile radius. And there will be a transportation unit, a security contest for that as well. The other way, and it will be adjourned from administration, board, talk to them. Any other comments?
The Business Functions meeting that we're going to have next Tuesday is probably going to be very packed, I'm sure. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to just thank Ann, Bob, Patrick for all the help that you guys have given me, to formulate that, and then also Dave and John for cooperating with me. I'm really trying to, trying to make sure that they were really good processes. The board was involved in a way I think they would want to be. And I really couldn't have gotten to this point with any of the products that I'm excited about without you guys really helping me with that and providing information on very tiny pieces, so thank you.
Before we adjourn, I just want to say.
Do you need to generate for this, or do you?
Yes. They will be both recorded, and that will be posted on the website. Or hand, well, not hand, I'll be taking the recording and presenting it to the board.
Any other comments? Okay, before we adjourn, I just want to say we'll be breaking for an executive session to address legal and personal matters. We have to be, so I apologize for missing back. Congrats.